This is Blue Sage ASMR. Hello, hello, hello and welcome back to another video. This is Blue Sage ASMR and I am Amanda. Today I have something special for you if you are an over thinker. If you are too much in your head and not enough in the present moment. We are going to take you from overthinking to mindfulness. Overthinking can cause a great deal of anxiety. We are going to try to turn off the overthinking and get into a state of mindfulness. Now, very often, the solution for overthinking is to get grounded in the lower chakras, to get grounded in the body, in the root chakra, in the sacral chakra, in the solar plexus chakra. If you're overthinking, you are stuck in your throat chakra, a little bit maybe, especially if you're talking about your worries. You're stuck in your third eye chakra and you're stuck in your crown chakra. You're all up in your head, so... We are going to turn that off. We're gonna connect to the heart chakra. But we are not going to do it by grounding in the body, maybe a little bit. We are going to turn that overthinking off by doing something a little bit homeopathic. We are gonna dive right in to crystals that correspond with the upper chakras. We're gonna get in there and we're gonna carve out whatever is stuck and ailing you on the spiritual plane, of course. So first, I'm going to light some of this fantastic blue sage incense. When we light the incense, we set our intention for the session. I am a certified Reiki master instructor and a former Florida licensed massage therapist. I'm going to be sending you distance Reiki energy today. And we're gonna be working with several crystals and several tools to help you get out of your head and into mindfulness. And we are gonna just set this incense down on the table, right here in front of me, right here in front of you, right between us. Let the smoke permeate the aura of our intention. I'll put it right down here in front and maybe you will be able to see a little bit of that smoke coming up. There we go. Alright, the first thing I'm gonna do is I am going to use some smoky quartz crystals. Smoky quartz, smoky, 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 smoky quartz crystals to clear out all the things that are bothering you. We're gonna pretend these crystals represent all your worries. Here they are, all the things that you can't stop thinking about and worrying about that's causing you so much anxiety, depression and stress. We're gonna pretend it's right here. We're gonna shake it up and we're gonna clear it out. We're gonna use these smoky quartz crystals to pull, to pull, to pull, to pull, to pull out all of those extra thoughts you don't need. We're pulling, we're pulling, we're pulling, 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 pulling. We're pulling it out. We're pulling it out. We're pulling out all the things you can't stop thinking about that are preventing you from getting restful sleep, that are preventing you from doing all the self-care you need, from preventing you from getting on with your day. We're just gonna pull it out, we're gonna pull it out, pulling, pulling. Okay, there's one piece that's really a lot bigger than the others. We're gonna use that. We're gonna comb you a little bit. Gonna comb, pull it out. We're gonna use this smoky quartz, it's gonna absorb all of these extra things, all of these extra things you don't need. Get those thoughts out of your head. Let them go, let them go. Stop worrying about things you can't change right now and concentrate on taking steps to do positive things for yourself. Become grounded in the present moment. Take a deep breath and let it out slow. Let it out slow. Just comb your aura, just get the little crumbs and remnants that are left. See everything, everything that's bothering you is now trapped inside this stone. And so you don't have to worry about it anymore. We got it out. It's like if you get a thorn stuck in your finger or a splinter. We got the whole thing out. And it's all right in here. Okay, it's right in here. Let it go out the window, let it go out the window, goodbye. One more time, let it go out the window. Now it's gone. We have energetically gotten rid of it and it's gone. So now I'm going to clear your energy with a selenite wand. Selenite is a salt-based crystal that pretty much will kill any negative energy. We're just gonna get you real lit up, white lighted, as in white lighter, light worker, positive energy white light. We're gonna get you lit up with this salty white crystal. There you go, there you go, there you go. Just let that, it's like when you do the squeegee on your windshield. We're gonna use this as like a squeegee on your brain. Get all the stuff that's bugging you out of your head, squeegee it out, goodbye. Just relax, it feels so good to just relax and not worry. You are the most important thing, you are the most important thing, you are the most important thing. And if you are spending time worrying, instead of spending time on you and taking steps to make your life better, then you are not being mindful. This is time to spend time on yourself. Be aware of how much time you're spending worrying and wasting time. Only spend time on things that are productive, that get you closer to your goals. You may not be able to change everything in your life all at once, all in one day, but you can take baby steps every day to get to where you wanna be. Alright, so we pulled out all the negative thoughts. We got rid of all the negative energy. Now we are gonna dive into those upper chakras. So, the first stone I'm gonna use is this snowflake obsidian. And that's because this balances the mind, body and spirit. So, instead of trying to get grounded to counterbalance all this activity going on up here, we're just gonna use this stone to get balanced in general. This is a purity stone. And it just will create a balance between the mind, the body, the spirit so that you can feel peaceful and tranquil. Snowflake obsidian, snowflake obsidian. Okay, we are gonna get into some, some stones that correlate to those chakras, those upper chakras. We're getting there, I want to show you this. Copper mandala. This is the flower of life mandala. It's often associated with archangel Metatron, who I lovingly refer to as the plumber angel. He can get things that are stuck in your life unstuck. He can clean out the pipes of your thoughts, so to speak. He can get things working again. This flower of life is so important, this symbol, this mandala. It reminds us about mindfulness, it reminds us what's important, our own wholeness, our own totality. Copper is so cleansing, so purifying. We just want to take a moment to absorb this symbol and remember what it is that's most important. See the bigger picture. Let that reflect back onto you, let that reflect into your aura. Let that absorb into your aura so that you can find balance again, can find balance in your own being. And the sense of mindfulness. So, next, I wanna take a look, I wanna take a look at your crown chakra, your third eye chakra and your throat chakra and just see what's going on in there. Okay, so I am gonna shine the flashlight to a bit of light therapy, light therapy with my purple flashlight. And if this bothers your eyes, you can shut your eyes. You don't have to watch. I can still see into your chakras even if you have your eyes shut. Are you ready? Okay, here I go. Okay, shut your eyes if this is gonna bother you. I'm gonna take a look now, okay, shut your eyes. Interesting. Oh, I see. Oh wow, okay. I see what's going on in there now. Interesting. We can definitely take care of that. We can definitely take care of that. The throat chakra. Okay, I have another light that like is more specific, it's more of a pinpoint. Little, little light, okay? So, remember to shut your eyes if this bothers you. And I'm gonna do it now, so shut your eyes. Take a look at your throat, your throat chakra, okay? Looking good. Your third eye chakra, your crown, alright. I see what's going on, I see. Alright, make a little infinity symbol, sort of break up any calcification that's going on in there in the third eye. And we're back, we're back. You can open your eyes now. I'm not gonna turn the flashlight again. Alright, okay, so... Got a little patchouli mist, patchouli is balancing. That's my cat for you, if you can hear her. She has a beautiful voice, her throat chakra is working perfectly. Just gonna do a little mist, okay? Put a little bit on my hands. Break up any stagnant energy in your upper chakras and find balance. Alright. So, first, I'm going to address the throat chakra with this stone known as appetite, 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 appetite. Like you're hungry and you have an appetite. The color of the throat chakra is like a pale blue, something, it's like a turquoise blue, a lighter-ish blue, less dark blue. So we're just gonna get in the throat chakra, get in there with this appetite and kind of like, sort of like I said, homeopathic cleanse. Instead of trying to pull all the energy that's going on up here down into your lower chakras and get you grounded, we're gonna sort of over ping these chakras until they calm down, until we can get the wheels to spin a little slower. Your chakras are like little fans spinning, little, you know, like a little box fan or a little, little fan. You're the kind to keep you cool. And we just wanted, we wanna take it from high to low. We definitely still want you to be using these chakras. We still want them activated, but we wanna kinda take it down a notch and soothe it, soothe it, soothe it. Just be mindful of everything you talk about, everything that comes out of your mouth. Every word that comes out of your mouth, you are manifesting. So if you're always complaining, if you're always complaining, if you're always talking about everything you're worried about, you're just going to attract more of that, just going to attract more of that. So, you want everything that comes out of your mouth and everything that goes into your mouth to be positive. Everything that goes in and out of your throat to be positive so that you can manifest positive things in your life, you can reach your goals. We just want you to be mindful of what it is you're consuming, consuming. Eating healthy, that sort of thing. What are you consuming, what are you consuming on TV? What are you consuming on the internet? Be mindful, don't just let it absorb. Be mindful of what's coming in, what you're receiving. Be mindful of what words are coming out of your throat, on your tongue. Be mindful of what you're reaching for and just... We wanna create an awareness and slow things down a little bit so that we're in a positive state. And we're not creating our own demise. We wanna make sure that we are not our own worst enemy, okay? Next, we are going to address the third eye chakra, the third eye chakra. This is lapis lazuli. I don't think I'm saying that right, but I'm very familiar with this stone. It corresponds to the blue third eye chakra, otherwise known as the indigo chakra. Indigo is the color that's between blue and purple on the spectrum. And we just wanna, we wanna like make sure our mind is taking us to good places, not just when we're awake, but also when we're asleep. We wanna make sure that we're spending mind time, mind dollars, mind space, on things that are going to help us out, not things that are gonna make us more stressed out. And whether it be conscious or unconscious, we wanna be aware of ourselves and where we are letting our mind go. Also have a quartz crystal and another piece of lapis. We're just gonna, gonna go into your eyes here. You've got your eye and your eye and your eye. We're gonna, gonna poke around in here and kind of pluck it out, pluck it out. Pluck, 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 pluck it out, pluck it out, pluck it out. Let's just pluck it out. Take a deep breath in. Okay, 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 okay. One last thing for the third eye chakra. This little, little box, this little wooden box with a little blue stone on it that's got a little Florida panther on it. Or it can be whatever kind of big cat you want it to be. This came from the Seminole Indian Reservation in Big Cypress Preserve. And the purpose of this box, you write down your dreams, you write down your goals, you write down your wish and you put it inside your box. Okay, so I want you to think of what your wish is. What do you want most? What would make you the happiest? What would bring you the most joy? What is your ultimate goal in life? I want you to write it down. I want you to write it down on a piece of paper. And we're gonna put it in the box. So now it's in the box. Okay? Now it's in the box. Every night before you go to bed, you're gonna think about what it is that you want. And as you fall asleep, you're going to allow your third eye to flow into the dream world with that joyous thought in mind, with that ultimate goal in mind. So that your unconscious is swimming in it as you fall to sleep. And eventually, it won't be a dream anymore. It'll become your reality if you just keep thinking about it every night when you go to sleep. Just think about the blue stone and how it matches your third eye. Okay? Just let, let your wishes absorb into your consciousness and replace all those anxious thoughts you've been having. Only think about the things that make you really happy. And that is what will be attracted into your world. Okay. So now, we need to address the crown chakra. The crown chakra. Your connection to the spirit world. Your connection to your higher self. So I have this amethyst crystal and boy, isn't it just gorgeous? It's like a chunk of the earth. It's like a beautiful, sparkly crown. Imagine this beautiful, purple, sparkly crown you've got. And it's got spikes in it, just like a tiara. And you're wearing it on your head like an antenna. And you're only going to attract into your spiritual self, your spirit connection, the things you want to attract. This is like your antenna to the great beyond. And it's up to you what kind of signal you send out. It's up to you. If you send out the right signal to get the things you want to have the things you want come to you to have. Your life be as peaceful and serene and calm and easy and enjoyable and happy as you want it to be, but you have to be mindful and stop thinking about things that you don't need to worry about, that you can't do anything about. You need to send out the signal that's only about the things you want. And even if it seems impossible, even if it seems like I'll never reach my goals, you will. Somehow the universe will move mountains. And you will be able to create whatever it is you want in your life. And if that's getting to sleep all day, then that's what will happen. I think most of us have a little bit more goal than that. A little bit more hope than that. But the fact of the matter is you've gotta stop spinning that wheel so fast. You've gotta slow it down. Slow it down. Slow. Slow, slow, slow it down and say, "Hey, wait a second, stop everything." Snap your fingers. Make time freeze and think, "What is it that I really want to attract right now?" "It's not these bad feelings I'm having as I worry about things I can't change." Just use your brain space for the things you want to attract. Have your beacon be a light so that things that you're looking for can find you. Just ground and relax. Ground and relax. Ground, ground, ground. Down roots coming out of your feet into the ground from your ground and relax, relax, relax. Doesn't that feel better? So now we're just gonna fluff you up a little bit. Just gonna get out the rough edges. Just polish you up. First, I have this fluoride crystal which has purple in it. It has purple in it, so it connects to the ground. But that green, that green is the heart chakra, and the heart chakra is the thing that connects our thinking self, our upper chakras, our spiritual self to our body, our root sacral and solar plexus chakra. The heart is the chakra right in the middle that connects the whole package. And so we have to look into our hearts to truly find that mindfulness. We have to look into our hearts and say, "What makes us feel good?" "What do our hearts tell us that we should be doing?" "What does your gut tell you? What does your heart tell you?" Even if you don't know here, and even if your logical self doesn't know, even if your real world physical self doesn't know, your mind doesn't know, your heart will know. Your heart will know. Your heart will always know what to do. So we wanna really activate that heart energy and connect it, connect the string, the string of the chakras in our body. And smooth it out. And I'm going to just comb out any rough edges. Any rough edges with this cinnamon brew. Cinnamon has a great spicy scent for getting rid of any negative energy, and it's also a lot of fun too. I put cinnamon in my coffee. It's good for stimulating, activating. Just cleansing, sweeping away anything that's left over so we can get to that mindful heart space, that mindful heart space. And I'm going to to fluff you up. I'm gonna fluff up your aura so that you're big and puffy. Now, a big ego, that's a whole nother thing. That's probably not a good idea, but a big aura will protect you in the real world. It will give you confidence. It's like a bubble of energy around you protecting you, allowing you to feel things without getting hurt so much. Okay, so let's fluff up your aura. Wanna fluff up all around those upper chakras. Alright. Let's send you some distance healing energy just to end the session. I'm sending you Reiki healing energy with the most positive intention. And if you don't wanna receive it, you won't. Reiki is only sent when the receiver is willing to receive and wants to receive the Reiki healing energy. It's okay if you wanna turn off the video. You don't have to take this, but I'm sending it to you in hopes that we have found you a place of peace in your body, in your life. And then you can rest with ease. Take a deep breath and find some stillness and mindfulness in your heart. I hope you enjoyed this video. Please like, subscribe, and leave a comment. Help me grow this channel so I can keep making more Reiki healing videos and just ASMR videos for you, for you, for you, for you, for you. I will see you next time. Namaste.